I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the September 25th, 2018 County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And if you need a listening device, Craig is in the front and he can help you with that. We're going to start our meeting out today with some recognition of employees who were honored by the South Dakota Association of Counties for their milestone years of service and also recognition of the county's Stop Loss Safety Awards. And so I'm going to come down here and I'm going to call your names. Some of the people are here and some are missing and then I'll just present the award publicly. Okay, first we have Diane Rickema with 35 years.
Yay Diane.
We have Alyssa Ostie with, she's not here, but she retired in May of 2018 and she was with us for 30 years.
Wow.
We have Lori Strangland with County Statistician for 25 years. We have Steve Williams with County Senior Sign Management Team and he is not here, he's been here with 35 years. And we have a stranger in our midst, Lynn Crell who retired in June of 2018 and she was with us for 40 years. And Jeffrey Lamar who's been with us for 40 years also. Both of these are from the Juvenile Corrections Center and Jeffrey is a caseworker. So, thank you Jeffrey. Deborah Johnson is Planning and Zoning Technician and she's been with us for 30 years. Cheryl Olson is the Assistant Director, or excuse me, Assistant Registered of Deeds Office and she's been with us for 40 years. I might annihilate this. Angela Belfi, I apologize, I don't think she's here, 25 years of service. And Michelle Boyd, and I don't see her, but she's been with us for 25 years and she's also in the Sheriff's, she's the Sheriff's Deputy, Chief Deputy Sheriff in the county. Gierman, County Deputy Sheriff Captain, and Jason's here, he's been with us for 25 years. Michelle Olson, Angela's too, that'd be great, thank you. And Jerry Winters who also retired in August of 2018 and he was with us for 25 years and he's not here today either. We have two Loss Control Safety Awards presented to Minnehaha County on behalf of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, both of these for, one of them is working with Compensation Fund, they actually both are. We have the gold level and the platinum level. Doug, do you want to just grab these and we can go on with the next one too. Doug actually got a nice surprise, we invited him up to accept these and then surprised him with a Jim Fersdahl Award for Safety Leadership. It says Jim Fersdahl Memorial Award presented to Doug Blonker for your outstanding and dedicated leadership in safety and loss control for South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, South Dakota ML Workman's Compensation Fund, September 2011, 2018. Thank you, thank you for coming, it was a nice surprise.
If we could, ma'am chair, could we get a picture with all the commissioners and everyone who receives certificates?
I think we've got all the commissioners.
Just come down and we'll just circle around.
Come up by the flag, don't you?
We're going to excursion corner, yeah.
There's a big people down there.
Great.
Oh good.
Doing it right.
Ladies, we just switch you two out.
There you go.
I am shorter.
There we go. So you can see everybody and.
Want you to get a little bit there? Oh yeah, I can see all the faces of everybody. All right. Everybody smile, here we go. Pictures in the paper. Many papers.
Thank you so much.
Thank you to all of you guys.
Likewise.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So Commissioner Karski just quickly added that up in his head, 375 years of service, that's incredible. So, thank you again and thank you for coming, you guys running out here in the rain, it was great. Now we'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
In a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number five, excuse me, three is bills to be paid in the amount of $596,534.66.
Pay the bills.
Motion in a second, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports, there are none. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number five, excuse me, three is bills to be paid in the amount of $596,534.66.
Pay the bills.
Motion in a second, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports, there are none. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number six is abatements recommended for approval, there are none. Item number seven is notices and requests, there are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of legal, there is none. Next we have opportunity for public comment, is there anyone that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? Move on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider a motion to approve a 49 cent decrease to September 18, 2018 bills for a total of $4,546,974.80. Olivia.
Yes, the Auditor's Office discovered the system error where a Reliance Telephone Inc. bill in the amount of 49 cents was included in last week's total. So we just need a motion to approve the bills totaling $4,546,974.80, non pro tonk, to September 18, 2018.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is authorize the chairman to sign the prisoners' housing agreement between Minnehaha County and Falk County and Minnehaha County and Charles Mix County. Warden Grohmer, good morning.
Jeff Grohmer, I'm the warden at the jail. I just have a couple of housing contracts that I'd like to have approved and signed for us to house some of our inmates at both Falk County and Charles Mix County. This is a result of the fire at the Corrections Center. These contracts will allow us to gain a little bit of flexibility in our current housing situation for our peaks and, well primarily the peaks, not so much the valleys, but the peaks in our housing populations typically over the weekends and as our population ebbs and flows a little bit, this helps us better manage the higher population numbers.
Any questions for the warden? Commissioner Bender.
Warden Grohmer, I assume you've looked closer to try to find beds and these are the closest beds you're able to locate?
These two agencies allow us to house larger numbers. In Falk County, we currently have 12, in Charles Mix County, we have 15 inmates, which the bigger numbers helps us from traveling as often. Obviously, we did look a little bit closer. There's not a lot of jails real close to us, when you look at which jails are closest to us, you're over to Mitchell and Brookings County. Mitchell had a couple of beds that would be available, but not very reliably available. They're in the same situation as we are, as their population ebbs and flows a little bit, they have less beds or more beds depending. So that one fluctuates a little bit more. Brookings County is the next closest jail, that one really, they didn't have any space available. As we got a little bit farther around, we kind of ran into the same problems, either there wasn't beds available or it was just for a couple inmates and we didn't have reliability that we have with these two counties.
Commissioner Bender.
Warden Grohmer, does the business interruption policy that we have cover the transportation costs since obviously we would have to house them anyway, but the transportation's an additional cost?
I believe that it covers the transportation costs as well as the housing costs.
Awesome.
That is awesome. But I haven't received an official statement from that from the insurance company, but that's my impression from the meetings we've had and the policy, insurance policy discussions.
Again, thank you for all your work.
Commissioner Karski.
You may have said this, warden, but are we paying a flat rate of 15 a day regardless of how many are housed, or are we paying for the actual number that are housed?
We're paying for the actual number that are housed and it's per bed day. So in Charles Mix County, it's $50 per day.
Okay.
Per inmate. So if I have one that gets released and we, or is going to get released and we bring them back, I'm not paying for that bed day. So same with Falk County. Falk County's rate's $85 a day and that's set by the sheriffs of the respective counties. That's not really a negotiated rate, I just kind of take what they, what they offer as far as their number. That's the same way we operate, we have a set per bed day rate and that's what other counties are built.
So I imagine the amenities at the Falk County jail are nicer than they are at?
The Falk County jail is a brand new facility. It's just open. When the officers dropped the inmates off, they said it still smelled like new paint. It's that new. Actually, earlier this spring or summer, a couple of our officers went up to Falk County and helped them train some of their staff because the jails are fairly similar and operate in a similar manner. Charles Mix County is an older facility and I'm just assuming the sheriff down there doesn't have the expenses that some of the newer facilities and some of the other agencies have.
There are no questions, I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 12 is consider a motion to authorize the Facilities Department to purchase a new truck. Mark Grins, good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Commissioner, Mark Grins, Director of Facilities. The Facilities Department has taken on additional responsibilities for outlying buildings and properties throughout the county. This increase has decreased the Facilities Department vehicle availability resulting in me using my personal vehicle to travel to and from job sites. I identified some savings in my 2018 budget resulting from not filling a couple custodial positions, expanded contract cleaning, and these savings will cover the cost of a new pickup. I received a couple different quotes for government pricing from a couple local dealerships and the lowest quote came in at actually $35,000. I just got a updated quote yesterday, so instead of $35,020, it's $35,000 even. So I am requesting commission authorization to purchase a new vehicle for the Facilities Department.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark? Commissioner Bender?
I just want to make a couple comments. First of all, the reason that he's under budget is because he's doing a lot of projects internally versus subcontracting those out and doing a lot of them himself. And secondly, I think we ought to wait another week because it could go down another $20.
I can keep chiseling.
Look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to authorize the facilities to purchase a truck for $35,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Mark. Item number 13 is consider a motion to authorize emergency manager/director to enter into electronic agreement with the South Dakota Office of Homeland Security for grant projects awards to Minnehaha County. Lynn, good morning.
Commissioners, good morning, Lynn DeYoung, Emergency Management. So as you know, on a yearly basis, Minnehaha County works in a region including Lake Moody, McCook, Turner, Lincoln, Union and Clay on identifying projects that are eligible and would work for the Homeland Security Grant Program. We get together in early March and prioritize those projects that have been submitted from within those counties and then the county makes, or the Regional Grant Committee makes a recommendation to the State of South Dakota on what projects should be funded. So below you have the projects that the Regional Grant Committee submitted to the state and then will be utilized by the county for our needs and everything. Those include the portable x-ray machine for the coroner's office, x-ray machine for the bomb squad, a vehicle for the SWAT team, excuse me, and the regional stop the bleed equipment. So to continue the process, I need the authorization from the commission to sign the online grants management system and go ahead with purchasing. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Lynn? Commissioner Barth?
So Lynn, I remember that in that shootout in Kimball, that we had the Bearcat vehicle there and that the armored vehicle that the state has was disabled by gunfire from those holed up in the building. And this is a very expensive vehicle. Getting a new one, is that really what we need to do and transferring it to another agency at no cost to them, is that what we need to do?
I'm going to ask Jason Gierman with the Sheriff's Office to come up and answer that question because it's more of a law enforcement question, so. He's right here.
Captain Jason Gierman with the Sheriff's Office and I'm the commander of the SWAT team. This is a joint venture with the Sioux Falls Police Department and it is licensed by the Minnehaha County and that's the agreement we have is we have several joint things that we deal with. But the Bearcat that we currently have is being utilized throughout the eastern part of the state and is being traveled all over, which actually leaves us without armor in the Sioux Falls area. So what we're doing with this one is we're housing, we're basically, we're going to have accessible to two Bearcats now. So what's going to happen is we're going to house this at the South Dakota Highway Patrol and have access to it. But this will be a regional one that will be stationed on the east side of the state to be used if Brookings needs it, Lincoln County needs it, or the Highway Patrol needs it for their callouts. And then we will have one stationed here within our office to respond to calls in Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County and have, and there is a need for two, we could actually do with three. Long gone are the days of us driving into a, into a long driveway with Suburbans and hopefully we don't get picked off by a high power. This, it's one of those things that you wonder how you survive without it for all these years, but, so that's kind of the, the plan that we're dealing with now and Trevor Jones from the state has agreed to keep that here on the east side as we need it and the Sioux Falls police need it, so.
That's a great explanation, thank you.
Any additional questions? Look for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 14 is consider a motion to authorize the Chair and the Director of Emergency Management to sign the 2019 state and local agreement, sub recipient agreement between Minnehaha County and the State of South Dakota for the emergency management, emergency management, county emergency management. Lynn, sorry.
Good morning, Commissioner, Chairperson. Once again, this is an annual agreement with the State of South Dakota, included within your package, should have been the work plan and the things that are there. There is some changing in the grant. We're going through an analysis process where they're looking at seeing exactly what the office does here in Minnehaha County and then in other areas. So some of the things, you know, the grant changes every single year, just like with Homeland Security, so we're going through that analysis process now and we'll continue to go through that as the grant year goes on. So the information should be in the packet and I know the SIO had a, had a brief description or an approval process for you, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. But as the memo indicates, the Chairperson and the EM need to sign the agreement and I'd be looking for that authorization.
Any questions? I would ask Commissioner Barth.
I was just going to ask Lynn, does this differ from last year's?
Yeah, I mean, there are differences, every single year has changed and everything, so there are differences. If you want me to come back with a difference list, I can do that, but otherwise I'd be, my recommendation is just to authorize the Chairperson to signatures.
Thank you.
I would ask that the motion be to approve after further review by the State's Attorney's Office only because the lines that look like they were redacted are actually highlighted and so we need a clean copy to make sure. So I would ask that you would ask for approval of the contract to be signed after further review by the State's Attorney's Office, just to make those clear.
That would be my motion, to approve after the State's Attorney gets to review.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 15 is authorize the Chairman to, excuse me, authorize the Sheriff's Department to submit an application for the 2018 State Criminal Alien Assistance Program grant funds. Joel, good morning.
Frank Commissioners, Joe Bosman, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. What I have before you this morning is request to apply for a federal grant, what we call SCAP, which is short for State Criminal Alien Assistance Program. What is this, this is a yearly grant that we've been applying for that is awarded to counties that house inmates that maybe their immigration status is questionable, maybe they haven't had a contact with Department of Homeland Security yet. So we submit all of our records of individuals during this certain reporting timeframe that have a country of origin different than the United States and then we can be reimbursed at a certain amount from the federal government for them to determine to help us offset our costs of housing and incarcerating these individuals for state, local charges. Again, we are not keeping people for federal charges on these individuals, if they're actually in our house, in our jail for federal charges, then they don't qualify for this. This is something that we have to incur the cost for state and local charges. In the years past, you know, dollar amounts grants ranging anywhere from $30,000 to $35,000 a year, these are funds that have to be used for correctional purposes and they've been very valuable for us for body scanner or upgrades to security systems in our jail. So it's a very valuable grant that we'd like to apply for.
I'm sure.
Commissioner Barth?
Has there been an increase, you know, with the President's emphasis on this issue, has there been an increase in what we call illegals staying in our facilities?
In our facilities, not so much, no. We're not one of the, the regional housing facilities for immigrations due to the fact that we're usually, as you, Warden Grohmer could say, we're full with our own a lot of times, so we don't really see that impact that, you know, maybe I can't speak for the federal immigration, their increase in detentions.
Thanks.
Additional questions? Motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
Item number 16 is consider a resolution appointing regular and alternates to the lay members of the County Board of Mental Illness and the County Review Board for Developmental Disabilities. Jim Ostie, good morning, Jim.
Jim Ostie appearing as co-chairman of the Board of Mental Illness and the Review Board for Developmental Disabilities. We propose this resolution to you because of, first of all, the resignation of Clara Johnson, a longtime regular lay board member who got the opportunity to move to Minneapolis to the kind of housing she sought in her retirement and to be close to one of her daughters. I think she had served us for nine years in one capacity or another with the board. Luckily enough, she came up with one of her nursing school colleagues, Francie Miller, who happens to work for the South Dakota Board of Nursing, which has a really modern policy of encouraging its employees to participate in outside community endeavors and she happens to be a resident of Lincoln County. About that time Pam Tiddy appeared and indicated a desire to serve on the board. You of course know her because she was a deputy state's attorney for 27 plus years, excuse me, 37 plus years. So it was a whole combination of things coming together at the same time. Though lastly, our three-year terms for the balance of our appointees would end December 31st, so we would be appearing before you to seek renewal of those appointments. The proposal then, which comes forward includes a little linkage to Lincoln County's participation in our joint board. They have two board members who need to be renewed as well. So I was told that you needed this to be read out loud.
Yep, Jim, if you could please read it, there's been a couple word changes since the one that was posted on your iPad, posted on your iPad, so we'll just have Jim read it.
The heading of this resolution is establish appointments to the Minnehaha Lincoln County Board of Mental Illness and the Review Board of Developmental Disabilities. Whereas SDCL 27 capital A dash 7 dash 1 provides that the Minnehaha County Commission appoint two regular lay members and two alternate lay members of the Minnehaha County Board of Mental Illness for a term of three years. And whereas SDCL 28 capital A dash 7 dash 24 provides that the Minnehaha County Commission appoint two regular lay members and two alternate lay members of the Minnehaha County Review Board for Developmental Disabilities for a term, and we do have a typo there, we have a duplication of for a term, for a term of three years. And whereas the co-chairman of the Minnehaha County Board of Mental Illness and of the Minnehaha County Review Board for Developmental Disabilities has recommended qualified candidates for said positions, now therefore it is hereby resolved by the Minnehaha County Commission that Pam Tiddy be appointed as a regular lay board member of the Board of Mental Illness and the Minnehaha County Review Board for Developmental Disabilities effective immediately. Francie Miller be appointed as an alternate lay board member of the Board of Mental Illness effective immediately. And Mary Ellen Hyrigs be appointed as a regular lay board member of the Board of Mental Illness effective January 1, 2019. And Jan Schmuck and Mona Helseth be appointed as alternate lay board members of the Board of Mental Illness and the Minnehaha County Review Board for Developmental Disabilities effective January 1, 2019. And Janay Poppins be appointed as a regular lay board member of the Board of Mental Illness effective immediately. And Mary Ellen Hyrigs be appointed as a regular lay board member of the Board of Mental Illness effective January 1, 2019. And Jan Schmuck and Mona Helseth be appointed as alternate lay board members of the Board of Mental Illness and the Minnehaha County Review Board for Developmental Disabilities effective January 1, 2019. And Janay Poppins be appointed as a regular lay board member of the Board of Mental Illness effective immediately. And Sean Coystre be appointed as an alternative lay board member of the Board of Mental Illness effective immediately.
Okay, any questions for Jim? I would look for a motion to approve.
I do have a question.
Commissioner Barth?
First of all, let me say this is, I think, the very first cooperative agreement between Lincoln County and Minnehaha County where we both boards interacted. So do we approve this and then they separately approve this? Is that the, what's going to happen?
They are simultaneously addressing this same.
Do we synchronize our watches on this?
We propose that we have a telephonic joint meeting, but for whatever reason. You know, the joint agreement calls for at least a once a year joint commission meeting on the subject and to my knowledge, there's never been one of those, but it doesn't have to be a joint meeting, we can contemporaneously pass the same resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve these appointments.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, we have to have a roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Bender?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Item number 17 is a briefing and closing remarks from the South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit on the 2017 Minnehaha County Audit. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Jeff Shafer, I'm with the Department of Legislative Audit. We've recently completed your fiscal 17, fiscal and compliance audit and the report is in its final form and I have presented a prepared and management letter for each of you, that you've all gotten a copy of it. And in there, it outlines the items of which I'd like to discuss with you. items of which I'd like to discuss with you. However, if you turn to page two, which outlines those items, the various deficiencies that we might have, there are none disclosed under each item. So I do not have any reportable conditions that need to be brought to your attention. There were other items of less significant nature that were discussed with appropriate officials, and but that's, I have nothing further for you unless you have questions for me.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Is there questions for Jeff? Commissioner Barth?
Jeff, with your experience with other counties and maybe what you hear, do you have any experience with highway departments in other counties using wheel tax money for brick-and-mortar type projects for like building a garage?
Well, your county here is unique in one, in this state, and maybe with Pennington County, it'd be the other exception, is that you have enough dollars that you generate from your licensing and stuff like that, restricted money to fund your highway shop and actually grow a cash balance. Most places, the majority of their money comes from the general fund. So they long since, before the end of the year, have spent up all their restricted dollars, which is their money that they're generating specifically for highway purposes, and then the rest of it is funded by the general fund. Therefore, they use those dollars to build buildings and stuff like that. But the law is specific that says that, talks about building buildings. It's just for paving and for roads, for those dollars. And that's kind of been the interpretation. But that is, that's the difference between Minnehaha County and most of the other counties I deal with.
Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner Karski?
If you'd clarify that, because my understanding is just the opposite. Most counties, if not all of them, except Minnehaha County, are using wheel tax dollars to build brick-and-mortar.
The wheel tax law, I was referring to the law that still talks about the revenues generated. Wheel tax is a separate law, and I don't know exactly what that specifically states.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood Jeff's question.
Well, if you're talking about restricted dollars that are just like for tax licenses and so on and so forth, those dollars come in, and those are restricted for specific purposes. And if you go by what the County Road and Bridge Fund allows those dollars to be used for, it doesn't state anywhere in there about brick-and-mortar. It just says for paving and maintaining of road structures and that type of stuff. And where we have with the other smaller county is, let's just say it's a million-dollar budget they have out there. They only have maybe three or four hundred thousand dollars of revenue generated from these other spots, these other type of restricted dollars, wheel tax and so on and so forth. So the rest of it's made up with general fund dollars. And so they're using, the argument could be made that they're using general fund dollars or non-obligated dollars to fund those building projects.
Commissioner Bender?
So if I'm, I'm not sure that the question was answered.
I'm sorry.
Can you use wheel tax dollars to build brick-and-mortar buildings?
I don't know if I couldn't answer that right now. I'd have to look at that law.
Okay. I think that's our question. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Any additional questions? I don't think so. Thank you. And thank you to the auditor's office and your staff, because I know, Bob, you couldn't do it by yourself. So your staff that keeps all those things clean. So, good job, you guys.
Chairman, since everything is looking so good and apparently so easy, could we get a reduction in our rate on this?
You just flew through that, didn't you, Jeff? Yeah.
He was already sitting down.
Item number eighteen is consider a motion to adopt the final fiscal year 2019 budget for Minnehaha County. Carol Muller?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, and I would say that Jeff is always very aware of the fact that we're asking about number of hours and how we're doing on the cost of the audit. He will tell you that it comes up multiple times. Matter of fact, I think when he sees me, it's the first thing he talks about. So we appreciate the work they've done and are glad to see a clean audit come through again from Minnehaha County. So, six months ago, we started working on the 2019 budget. And before you today is the final adoption of the 2019 budget. And the total amount of that budget is eighty-seven million, six-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars. A few highlights of the fiscal year 19 budget would include your cash applied number. That's a big thing that you guys like to look, that you do look at, and is a very important number for you. The cash applied is four-point-six-eight-four million dollars. Usually, you're right around that four-point-five million, so you've continued to stay right in there. Additional opt-out dollars of six-hundred thousand dollars are being used. The last time you passed an opt-out was in July 2015, effective for FY16, and you are using the last of that three-point-five million dollars. The CPI was adjusted by two-point-one percent per South Dakota property tax limitation statutes, and the property tax growth in Minnehaha County was two-point-nine-three percent due to new construction. I would open up for any questions you have. Before you is several sheets of information, including the ones that you need to certify that will be published in the paper. I know we have media here today, and we also have press releases for them, so they can get the numbers also.
Are there any questions for Carol? I think we have beat this to death. It amazes me when you said we've worked on this for six months. We will start working on the next year's in just shortly, which is the sad part. If there are no questions, I will look for a motion to approve, and then it will be a roll call vote.
We move for approval?
One second.
Excuse me.
And roll call. Olivia?
Bander?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number nineteen is Minnehaha County liaison reports. Are there any reports this week? Commissioner Barth?
Just a couple of quick things. One is, last night at our planning and zoning meeting, we agreed to allow an expansion of the West Quarry in Del Rapids. We all toured there this last year. And then with the abandoned cemeteries board, they're finding themselves to be overtaxed and for a number of reasons. And so they have sent out some recruiting stuff to encourage others to join in their group. And apparently, there's already been some interest expressed. In fact, I spoke to a group of masons recently, and one of them was quite interested.
Commissioner Karski?
New liaison report. I guess last week, Commissioners Barth, Bender, and myself attended the UDC meeting at Seacog with numerous other city and elected officials from around the counties. Extensive discussion on paratransit in the Sioux Falls metro area. My experience going back to the city council days is it's a very expensive proposition or funding that has to be done. Primarily, it's a Sioux Falls municipal problem, city problem, but it was brought to this meeting because of the extensive reach that paratransit has. They have some tough decisions to make locally, and, you know, just to give you a heads-up to be watching for it.
Commissioner Karski, was that also not one of our resolutions that we supported with the Municipal League about difficulties with transportation? I believe it was.
Transportation overall and paratransit specifically, I believe, yes.
Commissioner Barth, Bender?
It was my understanding from that meeting that that resolution was not brought, will not be brought forward by the Municipal League. And so it just continues to be a struggle that...
It's a local issue, to be sure. It's not a statewide issue.
Thank you, Commissioner. Update on that. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
I just would chime in on that. I'm glad that Dean remembered to bring that up. And Gene, we were all, it was probably one of the more interesting discussions at a UDC meeting I've been involved in. And really, there are so many entities that have transportation going on in our county, and yet nobody is in charge of it. I mean, no single entity is the boss, so to speak. And even coordination cannot be done the way things are now. It's pretty haphazard, and something better needs to be worked out.
Additional reports? Last week, I was gone. I was not vacationing. Would have been nice. I was in Cottington County doing a jail assessment on the juvenile side of the jail for the state juvenile detention alternative initiatives. And I'd just say, we're very blessed here to have the facilities we have. Obviously, we know we have issues too. Everybody does. But our taxpayers have been supportive of a bond so that we could do the addition that we need on our jail, and which is really important now, since we had a fire at the correction center. But Cottington County continues to struggle to get support from their community to upgrade their jail. And they really could use some help up there. And I wasn't there to assess their jail, just the juvenile side of it. And it was a good tour, and they have great people up there working, so that's where I was. Okay, with that, we'll move on to new business. Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Look for a motion to recess in the county commission meeting, and we will reconvene into executive session. Is there a motion to...
Just a recess. Just a recess.
Thank you. A motion to recess. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.